Alright, everybody got so quiet.
And just say it's nothing else.
Alright, hey, welcome. Reconvene meeting of the Pedaluma City Schools Board of Education. If you would all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Say bye Mr. Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its
I'd like to remind everybody at this time, if you do me a favor and put the cell phones, if you have a vibrator, just turn them on, we sure appreciate it. And we'll move right to the adoption and approval of the agenda.
Second.
Those in favor of the agenda as it is?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're gonna stick to it. No changes on the agenda. Let's go to approval of the minutes. Sue, we had somebody.
I abstained, because I wasn't there.
Okay, so we'll only be opposed to... Well, I'll take a motion first.
A second.
All those in favor of the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So you have one more. One minute. We will now go to the celebratory part of the meeting. That's gonna be the student presentation. So, some logistics while we're doing this. Am I walking my way up here? Oh, oh. You're always good at home when we stick to the agenda. Okay, so logistics. Here's how we do this. We're gonna have the student representatives come up. They're gonna introduce the Students of the Month. Students of the Month will come up and they will stand very uncomfortably right in front of the camera. We'll videotape you for a very long awkward period of time. Then we YouTube it or do something to it, I'm not really sure. Parents, if you'd like, you're welcome to come over here. If you'd like to take pictures, because you're gonna get them back, everybody over there. And so feel free to just kinda make your way over here if you'd like. And we will start with Kennelworth. So I'll take it Kennelworth first, representative. You can start.
Good evening, I'm Emily White. And Kennelworth Junior High is pleased to introduce our March Student of the Month, Ian Trudy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right there.
Ian has been nominated for Student of the Month by his senior teachers because they see how hard work he is. He's constantly working and has great determination and persistence to get through any difficult task. He's a great role model and is well respected by his peers and teachers. He's kind towards others and a true pleasure to have in class. At Kennelworth, Ian carries a pretty heavy load. He has studied Spanish for two years and is currently taking advanced English and Algebra I. He played on the 8th grade basketball team and also plays for CYO and AAU. When he is not school, Ian likes to keep his shape by running and playing basketball with his friends. His favorite class is History from Mr. Quatua because he makes the subject really fun. After high school, Ian intends to enter college and hopefully create a possible. Ian's parents are very proud of him. They have this to ask. Ian has become a big brother to Jake and Carter and a perfect example of what hard work and determination he achieves. He is a leader and a team player, which are revealed not only on the court but in the classroom as well. Ian always gives his 100%. Congratulations, Ian.
This time we also would like to acknowledge that Ian's success in the classroom is partially a product of everybody around him who supports him. So all those that are here supporting Ian tonight, if you'd like to acknowledge, you can stand up for him.
Kennelworth Junior High School is pleased to introduce the March Student of the Month, Kylie Ha.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Kylie has been nominated for Student of the Month by her team of teachers because she is such an amazing student. She works very hard and consistently receives high marks on all her assignments. She is so respectful to her peers and her teachers and is always willing to help others. She participates in a positive manner and her contributions are always insightful. Mr. Plymouth of Kylie's band instructors states that Kylie is one of the hardest working students I know. She is one of the principal players in the 8th grade symphonic band and does this leading by example. Kylie never has missed an assignment in my classes in the almost two years she has been in the band program. Kylie's achievements outside of school are equally impressive. She has performed in the fifth row on the groove and ante. She has been active in the Girl Scouts for a burning faith of fourth grade. She also likes to read, bake, cook, wait for, and wake surf in this room. She also began just sage course back writing almost two years ago. Kylie's goals for after high school include going to college and traveling the world. Kylie's family is very proud of her. They have this to add. The reserved, shy exterior most teachers seen in Kylie's conceal and bubbly, vivacious creative force to be reckoned with. Her love of music extends beyond iTunes and her ambition. Entertains us every time she steps into the shower. While her clever and quick witted shape on the world reveals a brilliant sense of humor which never get to enjoy outside of our family. It is her determination and dedication to her that she sets her sights on that show us all what amazing young women she is. Congratulations Kylie.
And votes here for Kylie? How about Pedaluma Junior?
My name is Kayla Pearson, 7th grade officer. Kennelworth Junior High School is selecting Nicole Walker as the March Student of the Month. A creative, bright, and motivated young woman, Nicole Walker is Pedaluma Junior High School's Student of the Month for March 2014. Nicole's teachers hold her in high regard and see her as a deep thinker who consistently turns to the work of only the highest quality in all her classes. As a writer, she's exceptionally tuned in to teachers' instructions and expectations and follows through in a remarkable fashion. Nicole's teachers also appreciate her health and generosity with other students. She is a complete student blessed with a strong intellect, a great attitude, and self-advocacy skills. We believe Nicole will be successful at whatever she chooses to do in her future. Nicole's success this past year and a half has earned her gold Renaissance awards as well as membership for past three semesters on the principal's honor roll for maintaining a 4.0 GPA. Nicole continues to challenge herself this year by taking geometry, advanced English, and French one B as part of a rigorous 8th grade curriculum. She has balanced her academics with participation on the PJHS girls' basketball team for the past two years. A well-rounded person, Nicole keeps herself busy outside of school too. She also plays lacrosse for the Pedaluma High School club team and just finished her CYO basketball season. Every time, she also enjoys reading and drawing. Nicole's short-term goals are to finish the year with a 4.0 GPA and to take honors Biology and honors English next year at Pedaluma High School. She would also like to play basketball and lacrosse throughout her high school years and eventually attend a four-year college. When asked about some important issues facing her and her peers, she shared her concern about societal pressure in which kids are trying too hard to fit in for not being true to themselves. Nicole's parents share this about their daughter. Nicole is a very self-motivated and hardworking student. She always puts her best effort into every assignment, small or large. In addition to her academic abilities, Nicole is a genuinely nice person who cares about others. We are very proud of her. Congratulations Nicole.
Kennelworth Junior High School also selected Kevin Sierra Quintez as the March Student of the Month.
Congratulations.
Intelligent, disciplined, and hardworking, Kevin Sierra Quintez has been selected as Pedaluma Junior High School's Student of the Month for March 2014. Kevin is admired by his teachers for his work ethic and helpfulness in the classroom. They state Kevin leads by example with a huge effort. His work shows remarkable progress and he is a great role model for bilingual students. In class, he lets others go first and then offers the correct and well-reasoned answer. They also noted that Kevin is gentle and gracious with his peers, cool, calm, collected, and always has a smile. His quiet, sage-like manner draws students to him who seek a wise response to a question or situation. He also frequently clarifies information for other students in class. Kevin is off to a great charge this year academically. He has earned both Silver Renaissance Award and a membership on the PJHS honor roll for maintaining a high GPA as a 7th grader last year and in his first semester as an A grader. He continues to excel this year in classes and enjoys his current participating in the school's intermediate inn where he plays with face learning. Kevin's strengths were also evident earlier when he earned awards for academic achievement at McKenley Elementary School. When Kevin is not focusing on his studies, he loves being in the outdoors, playing basketball, soccer, and riding his bicycle. He also enjoys spending time with his family and friends. Some of Kevin's goals for the future include finishing his 8th grade year with strong grades, taking woodshop class at Pedaluma High School, and continuing his education at a four-year college. He has also considered playing soccer or football at the high school level. Kevin's parents are very, very proud of him and commented on how hard he works to be a good student and to keep his spirits up. Congratulations Kevin.
And Kevin's family? Okay, how about Casa Grande? Except we have one minute left, then...
Hello, my name is Jessica Sandoval. And I am the 18th president for the 2013-2014 school year. And it's an honor to congratulate Jack Migo as our second February Student of the Month. Jack Migo has held a 4.2 GPA over his high school career. He is captain for his varsity basketball team and has been a three-year scholar athlete. He is also a member of the tennis team where he earned first-team All-North Bay League as a junior. Jack is editor of the school newspaper, The Gaucho Gazette. Is also a member of the Best Buddies and is also a member of the Best Buddies Club. Jack was accepted to the University of Michigan with a sport management major as he hopes to follow his passion for sports in school in the future. Congratulations Jack.
And you Jack's family? What is the temperature of Michigan right now, Jack?
I am also pleased to congratulate Jack Jones as our March Student of the Month. Jack Jones is an AP student and has run varsity cross-country track for three years. He has also been a member of the school newspaper, The Gaucho Gazette, for three years and serves as the content editor this year. Outside of school, Jack enjoys reading, watching movies, and hanging out with his friends and family. He loves to listen to music and read about it, write about it, and discuss his favorite artists. Jack has been accepted to Northeastern University Honored Program for the next year but is waiting to hear back from Tufts, the University of Chicago, Cornell, Hamilton College, and several universities of California before making a decision. He plans to study English and writing. Having loved his English classes at CASA with Gaye Robbins, Mary Gardner, and Athena Couch, he hopes to end up doing something after college that involves writing about music. Congratulations Jack.
And Jack's family?
I'm also happy to introduce Katherine Daniels as our second Student of the Month for the month of March. Katherine and Katie Daniels always knew that she would attend Casa Grande for high school. What she didn't know was what kind of high school experience she would have. Four years later, the experience has almost come to an end. It was full of honors classes for freshman and sophomore year and advanced placement classes, both junior and senior year. That may have seemed overwhelming at times, but through all that, she managed to maintain at least a 4.0 for the seven semesters she completed so far and hopes to keep that going through gym. In between schoolwork, Katherine also found time for outside activities. She plays on the Casa Grande's badminton team for four years and has been on the varsity for the last two. She has also volunteered at the Pedaluma Library for two years. And just this past summer, she co-coached a Pedaluma Youth Soccer League team. While Katherine isn't sure what college she plans to attend in the fall, she knows that she wants to major in criminology and inspires to someday work in a white-collar division of the FBI. Congratulations.
Jack's family? Alright, the Kennelworth High School.
My name is Mackenzie Merida and I'm the ASB Vice President at Pedaluma High School. And I'd like to present Molly Okumara as one of our March Students of the Month. Molly Okumara has worked very hard in high school to make the best of this academic experience. She has maintained a 4.24 GPA and has taken on a challenging course load of honors and AP classes all four years. Her favorite classes have included AP Psychology, Warriors of French, and AP Statistics. She has enjoyed making her mark at Pedaluma High School by taking on leadership roles in many aspects on campus. She was a French tutor for two years and has been an active member of French Club, CSF, and Trojan Troop. This year, she is treasurer of French Club, senior representative of CSF, co-president of Trojan Troop, PHS, and has also taken on the role of senior class vice president in ASB. In her spare time, she enjoys theater, watching movies, and cheering honors squad at sporting events. She has also volunteered her time extensively with local organizations. This year, Molly helped out as a volunteer assistant director and a backstage manager for four children's theater productions. She has also volunteered with CSF, Relate Your Life, Cinepar Theater, and Gilam Lutheran Church on their Mexico House building trip. Molly intends to pursue a career in film production and hopes to attend college in Los Angeles area. She is looking forward to furthering her studies at college in the years to come. Congratulations Molly.
And Molly's strength?
Hi, I'm Megan Guera and I'm senior class secretary at Pedaluma High. And we would like to congratulate Brian Hibonias Garcia. This year, Brian has challenged himself by taking AP courses and also participating in Pedaluma's academic decathlon. He has also played varsity soccer while being able to maintain a 3.5 GPA. Outside of school, he volunteered for the Boys and Girls Club of Washington Creek and has also volunteered at the Sonoma Cavi Library. Brian is a member of various clubs at Pedaluma High, including Latina Club, Safe School Ambassadors, and Bright Legal Student Ambassadors. After high school, he is going to the SRJC and then transferring to UC Berkeley. Congratulations Brian.
And Ryan's family? It's always the most enjoyable part of our meetings. Couple of things I'll share with you. One is that very soon, we'll have your name permanently put up on the Wall of Fame over here. I think that goes back to 1982 or 1983. Comes with all kinds of fabulous prizes. They'll be disclosed to you later, I can't do that in public. I just also want to take the opportunity to thank you because there are a lot of people that spend a lot of time and put a lot of hard work into providing you an environment and an opportunity to do what you've done and to enjoy the success that you've worked so very hard for. So, on behalf of everybody else who gets to look at the success that you have and takes a large amount of pride in it, I'd just like to thank you. And that's for all the people that open the doors in the morning at 5:00 AM to the people that close the doors at 10:00 PM at night. All the people that work so very hard to keep this district right. Thank you very much, you should be very, very proud. There's nine of you here. If I remember correctly, Steve, the number today is about 7,463 or 64 kids in the district. So, when you do the air math on that, that's pretty impressive. So, thank you very much and congratulations. We have one more presentation and then I will afford you a quick opportunity to sneak out. We turned the camera off so nobody knows who came, no way. But you might have more important things to do tonight if you're one of these high-achieving students like... Study? So, just so you know, in about five minutes or so, we will give you an opportunity to sneak out, alright? So, you'll hang with me for one second. We've got student reports from, I believe, the high school floor. Yes. So, let's start with... Let's go out of order and we'll start with Kennelworth just to mix it up a little bit. So tell us what's going on with Kennelworth, please.
Alright. So over at Pedaluma High School, we have been busy with fun and exciting activities. The basketball season just ended for both the boys and the girls. They finished their seasons with their awards dinner to recognize each player's hard work. Also, on February 28th, we had our annual crowd meet, which is a fundraiser that benefits the athletic boosters. The fundraiser raised about $3,000 in profit. On March 1st, the seniors held our fifth annual GQ event, which is a male pageant for the senior boys to participate in. Overall, the event raised about $4,000 for the senior class to put towards our prom. Our very own Michelle Larson was a medalist at the state wrestling tournament, defeating her area rival for Rancho Cotati, who she had lost to three times this season. The boys' wrestling team also performed well at the NCS meet. This past week, 11 PHS teachers joined teachers at CASA for the FUC Institute project-based learning workshops on Thursday and Friday. These workshops will inform planning and instruction as we move on to Common Core. Pedaluma High School staff is finalizing preparation for our upcoming WASP visit at the end of March. We look forward to welcoming the team and listening to their feedback. This week, we are putting on our Spring Spirit Week and we just had our spring rally that featured DJ Dax from 100.9 and many more fun games. Pedaluma High has started to kick off spring right and we look forward to more upcoming events.
Thank you. News here from the big house.
Casa Grande has been very busy with its past events and future events to come. First off, HOSA Future Health Professionals. Students are preparing to go to a state leadership conference and competitions in Los Angeles, March 28th through April 1st. They will be competing in competitions such as biotechnology, nursing assistance, and emergency medicine. They are also planning an education event at school to educate students about cystic fibrosis. Cystic fibrosis is a national service project for HOSA. The Best Buddies Club just held a kickoff at the bowling alley. For the Friendship Walk, they plan to attend in April. The Casa Grande cheerleaders are heading to Nationals in Anaheim at the end of this month. They are undefeated in all the regional competitions and have attended this year. The study skills classes have completed a career presentation this week. The students had to research a career they were interested in. They then assembled a present PowerPoint or poster to demonstrate the requirements needed to fill this career pathway. The students also had to orally present the results of their research to their classmates. The classmates conducted a peer review of the other students' work. We also recently hosted the Winter Olympics after several years of absence. The event was a success and we had seven teams participate in our various obstacles that challenged both mental and physical abilities, which helped promote school unity and spirit. Casa Grande Leadership hosted their third blood drive of the school year February 21st. And their next blood drive will be in the spring. Today, ASB presidential elections were held and next year's ASB president will be Emma Bryan and Vice President Alex Mendoza. Our leadership advisor attended an advisor convention in Reno in which he learned a variety of ideas he plans to implement in the leadership class. Casa Grande's annual Union Week is approaching March 28th to the 24th. And the leadership class is organizing the event at a larger scale compared to past years. Each day has a specific theme and we will be bringing in a motivational speaker. The goal of this event is to unite the school student body and school staff. GQ will be held Saturday, March 29th at the Vex Building. We currently have seven contestants hoping to be crowned Mr. GQ 2014. And lastly, our Earth Day celebration will be hosted on Earth Day, April 22nd. There will be an assortment of booths ranging from henna tattoos, pencils, photo booth, Spartans, our entrepreneurship class barbecue sauce, smoothie bikes, camel bags, three twins, electric cars, cupcakes, headbands, recycled artwork, games, and much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, before I call, a real quick break. I want to actually add something to what I said previously regarding the student of the month. Because I forgot to say this last time and I think it's important. It's really directed to those from Pedaluma Junior High School and at Kennelworth Junior High School. If you look up on the big wall over there, you're not gonna find a lot of what we call dobleys for people who were Students of the Month in 8th grade and Students of the Month again in 12th grade. It's actually a pretty small number, I was kinda surprised. And so, what I want to challenge you four that are here today is to see if you can hit that wall twice. And hopefully you heard some things that would get you on that path from some of the 12th graders that were Students of the Month from the high schools. So, good luck to you and again, thank you very much for that. And with that, I will take a quick break. And I will tell you, before I do that though, that the next item on the agenda is the certification of the second interim report. So hopefully we'll have enough money to finish the year for those of you that are trying to graduate. I'm pretty sure that we do. But if you're concerned about that, stay around. If not, thank you very much. We'd love to have you stay at the lab. Congratulations. Charlie? Charlie, I want to specifically acknowledge your role as a role model for your sister. Well done. Well done, yeah.
All the interesting things I heard with my computer.
He's positive, he thinks he's up for the election. This is you. Don't be drinking a lot of alcohol. Yeah? That's a neat deal. Alright, looks like we have everybody back in place. So we will reconvene. I'd also like to take this opportunity for anybody who's out there who would like to address the board either at public comment or on a specific agenda item. You need to make sure you fill out one of these. So I know I have one. Looking right there, okay. Anybody else? Nobody else, very good. There you go, we'll get right to you. Alright, so we are going to go now to item three. Which is certification of second interim report, please.
Yes, hello everybody.
Do we have anyone?
I made this presentation especially short because I heard that... Well, like, a couple of... I'm just relying on this model. So, in January, the governor said there's more money, so this new model reflects that. It also had a component where we would be able to see what amount of money we needed to commit to the supplemental portion of the budget. The supplemental dollars are the dollars that are based on our unduplicated account of socio-economically disadvantaged students, English learners, and foster kids. And it represents about 7% of the base grant. And then the other thing that's come to light is the home-to-school transportation and the targeted instructional improvement grant, otherwise known as TIG, was supposed to be above and beyond the local control funding formula, and that's how the budget was built when we adopted the budget. Somewhere along the line, and I'm still not entirely clear whether or not they have it straight at the state level or not, or what, but under the FICMAT model, they have incorporated that into the local control funding formula. So, now, the revenues were overstated. And so, as we go through, I'll just kind of go through what that means to us. And also, the home-to-school transportation and the TIG amounts are fixed amount. They won't see a COLA increase ever, at least that's what's planned as of this point in time. So, they remain fixed going forward. So, the local control funding formula here, this is based on the new model. So, this is our combined funding for elementary and secondary. This does not...
Is that the focus?
I don't know. Maybe I'm out of focus. It could be. Better? Yeah. Which one do you like, A or B? Sorry. Okay, so, these amounts here represent the target amounts. Those are the, that's if we were completely funded under the local control funding formula, these are the amounts that we would see for the elementary and secondary. But here's where we're at. This is 13, 14, and so on. You can see in this year, there's no middle bucket here, which is the supplemental. Supplemental is the first time identified in the 1415 budget. So, this year, we're getting what they consider all just general local control base. And then, these two amounts on top of it, the red and the yellow, are the transportation in the red and the TIG dollars. And you can see, they just stay there and they don't increase at all.
Because transportation costs never go up?
No, they do not. No. Gas never, yeah, none of that ever increases. So, in the current year, for our general, just for the elementary, secondary, again, the charters, I haven't incorporated the charter data into this information. We still don't have really good information, especially on the two new charters, the Gateway to College Academy, and then also the shift of Pembroke out of regular K-12 into its own charter. So, we're just looking to receive just under $46 million in the current year. And you can see, I need to really spring for a new, oh, there we go. Oh, there it goes again. You can see in 1415, we're still under $46 million, but three, what is that, three, just over $3 million will go towards the supplemental funding block grant. And then you can see it's going up gradually and getting closer, closing that gap for the funding formula. So, the change from the first interim to the second interim, there've been a lot of shifts. A lot of them are just technical accounting stuff. And so, it looks like we're getting a whole bunch more under the local control funding formula, but really, this is the shift of transportation up into this area here. It's very messy. It's not very pleasant. Slight decrease, rebalancing our federal funds, and then other local, typically grants and donations that we're getting, an overall increase of $8,000,000. Our overall net decrease is just $400,000. So, in this decrease, we have $1.1 million between special ed, I mean, home-to-school transportation and the TIG dollars. And we had some surplus shifting up here, but overall, we had a net decline in revenues. On the expense side, certificated salaries, a slight increase of less than .01%. Classified salaries, just up by 1%. Benefits, almost neutral. Books and supplies, a lot of times, these accounts are just shifting back and forth as people decide that they need books rather than, you know, consulting fees or whatever. So, we had an increase of expenses of $323,000, and so, the net impact on the unappropriated reserve is a net decrease of $726,000 from where we were at the first interim. So, this is what our ending fund balance looks like. We are deficit spending a little bit more based on that flip, and we're looking at $4.4 million in unappropriated reserves at the end of this year. Next year, based on the new multi-year projections with the LCFF model, we're a little bit better than break even, just a net increase of $259,000, and having a net unappropriated fund balance of just under $4.8. And in 1516, we're really going, starting to go a lot positive, by almost $3 million, which is kind of nice. And then ending with almost $7.7 million in the unappropriated. Oh, this was supposed to come out. That's not a slide. So, for negotiations, the district proposal is to provide all employees with a 2% cost of living adjustment for a total of $861,000. Reduce class sizes for teachers back to the 2007, '08 levels, and that would be at a cost of almost $1.5 million, and that would be adding back just under 20 FTE throughout the district. We plan on reinstating two full-time custodial positions. Having those cut have created a tremendous difficulty in moving custodial staff around to cover for when people are out ill or for whatever reason. And so, having these back should make a huge difference in the classroom environment. There's no increase in health benefits cap proposed, and the total proposal of this deal for 1415 would be $2,458,000. Actually, that should be $2,468,000. That's a typo. And then, going forward, as we have a step in pollinants increase, that cost will be about $2,517,000.
In addition, or?
No, no, no. Yeah, yeah. No, no, no.
Is that cool?
No.
Are those members incorporated into your multi-year?
No, they are in this one, though. I know. See, I was ready for you. Okay.
Just going back to the two, just for those, the 122, that's an all-in cost, right?
Yes.
That's Benny's, that's...
That's everything. Yes.
So, people know that the Soviet regime, or...
Yes, no, they're not. Yeah, their benefits because of PERS is around 23% of their salary, and then full-time benefits is hovering around $15,000 a year, so it adds up. Welcome. Okay, so, if we implement the district's proposal, we wind up going from a slight positive of $259,000 to deficit spending by $2.2 million in 1415. And then, 1516, we have a slight positive here. And as you can see, that deficit spending chews into our unappropriated fund balance and leaves us with $2.2 million, and then a slight increase of $2.6 in 1516. You look like you have some questions.
Reserves are minimal, it's supposed to be 3%, right?
No, no, no. The reserves are included in this line. So, we're, this is over and above our reserve requirement.
But I'm saying the reserve is 2%, right?
Yeah. And this is over and above.
But would Steve would prove his dictation where it will lie or not, 5%?
Well, this, I mean, during the recession, we kept the reserves very high. At this point, under the local control funding formula, we relaxed.
Yeah, we're relaxed. We don't know what to do on the reserve level. We don't know what to do. I mean, we haven't had one here in a year.
No.
Does it make sense to take our reserve down to 3%?
Well, we're not taking them down to 3% under this proposal. At this time, in the future, for the budget adoption in 1617 will be added, we adopt the budget, and that will be even more positive.
I just, I'm seeing some optimism of, you know, the local control funding formula.
Yeah.
It's an experiment, quite frankly. So, I'm just saying, does it make sense to scale it up like that and not really know how the states can play through?
Well, in looking at the projections, I would state that these are fairly conservative as how they're stated here, and that you would anticipate the fund balance being more positive than these projections.
So, Mike, just so you know, when you look, if you look at our third year out and this amount is over and above, our 3% reserve is around $2 million, so that's well over 6%. Yeah.
I'm a couple of the least far.
Well, we're there.
Well, we are, we're at 6, okay?
We're greater than 6.
Well, I get that, but I want to be sure.
It also doesn't incorporate when it has our proposed, which isn't...
Isn't negotiated yet.
Isn't negotiated, and there's not a lot of room, so.
Right, right. Go forward in the process.
Okay. Any other, any other...
So, there's just a second interim?
Yes.
And a third interim?
No, there's, there'll be another budget update in May when the governor comes out with his May revise. So, the legislature and the legislative analysts, and they all weigh in and put in their two cents, and maybe the governor will consider some of their proposals, maybe not. So, at that time, we'll see if he has any significant changes. One of the changes we're hoping for, and there's proposed legislation for additional Common Core monies for implementation, which would be great, so we'll see if that comes through or not.
In regards to the third interim, there are, based on the first interim, there would be three districts in this county that will do it, or those are districts that are either negative or qualified or asking for a positive certification later this year. So, there's only two of them that require it.
So, the numbers that are reflected there are pretty much what you think we'll wind up with in May or June when the money actually arrives, or July?
Well, typically, well, it's really hard to say. I mean, these simulators are just models. They're just estimates at this point. There could be all sorts of things, but hopefully, it won't be off tremendously. I'm hoping that as they've gone through and collected the other data, and my understanding is, is that one of the big pieces of data that they're missing is on the charter school side, and that they don't have a great system of identifying the unduplicated counts students. My understanding is, is that that's the biggest unknown in taking basically a bucket of money and then allocating it so that no one is losing and everything else. So, we'll see. I mean, there's just still things that are hanging out there that we just don't know yet. Given the amount of detail in the projection that FICMAT has, I mean, it's the only thing that I have to rely on that is fairly reasonable.
Having attended a FICMAT board meeting with the Department of Education president, they concur that FICMAT projections, not 100% accurate, but it's very close.
So, and then, given with the additional revenues that have come in this year and money owed from last year, they've upped the ante a little bit, so I'm hoping that it's real. Yes.
I noticed later in the certification process that we go on the attachment. Do you, do you get the boilerplate of that stuff? And then you take your data and make it fit? Because I'm noticing it still has revenue limit, and then it has sections where it's revenue limited, LCFF, and it's, looks like kind of a nightmare.
It's challenging.
That is the state form.
It is the state form. And yeah, the data is pulled in, and actually, we're in this really goofy place right now. Even trying to do the school accountability report card, oh my gosh, they're transitioning in new language under the new model, but yet, our old data is based on the old model, so I'm like, what do you really want? It's been challenging to sit through and figure out. And then again, I mean, the worst part is these shifts. That home-to-school and TIG switch, I had a conversation with somebody at CDE saying, how can you say that home-to-school has become unrestricted? We're required to spend what we spent last year if you're getting the money. They never unrestricted it. So, now, the resource code has become unrestricted. We have to treat it completely differently than, I mean, it's very confusing. So...
Anyway.
Well...
Do you have any questions?
Alright, there you go. Hopefully, that was short and sweet enough.
Alright. Moving on to comments from the public. Again, if anybody has a comment, someone walk in, you'll need to grab a yellow card and back if you'd like to make a comment. So, I'm going to, Leanne, have you come up here? Maybe we could get a...
Mitch?
Would you move? So, Leanne, I'm going to read something to the... Anything tough for, so you want to sit down for a second, please?
No, it's okay.
It's kind of long.
It's okay, it'll do.
Alright, under Government Code section, we're going to be testing on this DM. Government Code section, 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board access on the out-of-ventures providing relations, subject matter jurisdiction and school district. Although it's something we can... According to board policy, PT9323, speakers allocated a total of five minutes to address the board for a maximum of 20 minutes of each subject.
Hopefully that was short and sweet enough. All right.
All right. Moving on to comments from the public. Again, if anybody has a comment, someone walk in, you'll need to grab a yellow card and back. If you'd like to make a comment. So I'm gonna, Leanne, have you come up here. Maybe we could get a.
Um, Mitch?
Would you move? So Leanne, I'm gonna read something to the. Anything tough for, so you wanna sit down for a second, please?
Uh, no, it's okay.
It's kinda long.
It's okay, it'll do.
All right, under government code section, we're gonna be testing on this DM. Government code section fifty-four nine fifty-four dot three A. Members of the public have the right to address the governing board access. I'm gonna add a venture providing relation, subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. Although it's something we can. According to board policy, DT nine three two three speakers allocated total of five minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes of each subject matched. While government reference government code law speakers criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and all employees, the district does not incur policies specific to complaints against them. You can complain against us however you want. Just we can take care of the details. Should comments on the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employees' immediate supervision, supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, we listen carefully, we appreciate and value input from the public. You understand these as I've explained before? I mean, we lie that, but basically, if it's not on the agenda, we can't really have a large discussion about it. We might wanna ask you some clarifying questions, but we'd love to hear whatever you have to say, okay?
All right.
Your honor.
All right, so, hi, my name is Leanne Tedrow and I'm a student from Casa Grande High School. And I'm here today to talk to you about how Casa Grande may be handicapped accessible, but that doesn't mean it's necessarily easy to get around them. I never understood the difficulties one can face while venturing Casas campus until I got injured myself. I am an active kid, so I've never had an issue walking around campus aside from the occasional soreness from after soccer or back practice. That is until I tore my ACL meniscus in my knee. It was the first playoff game of the high school season, the last two minutes. We were leading four to zero over Sonoma and we were related to know we would be going to the quarterfinals. That wasn't until I went to kick a ball and my left knee went out suddenly with a sick knee pop. A month and one MRI later, I was delivered the news I had torn my anterior cruciate ligament and my chakra doorway meniscus. Another month and a reconstructive surgery after that, I was back at school after a week of being on independent study. I was on crutches for eight weeks. And although each day became more taxing than the next, this experience opened my eyes to many horrid experiences the permanently handicapped have to deal with on a regular basis. That is why I devoted my senior project to let as many people as I can know about the conditions with which I had to deal with at Casa. The first week back, I didn't even wanna go to school most morning because of how tired I would be at the end of the day. Apart from the fact I received an occasional golf ride from the yard duties, if I couldn't get the, if I was unable to get a hold of them, I would have to brave a good quarter-mile walk from my farthest class in the end wing to the student parking lot through students that wouldn't even move and pavement that was so, that was so uprooted even non-handicapped people would trip on it. These conditions were ever more treacherous in the rain where the R-wing sidewalk was so slippery I would slip almost every other step. The ostracism was also apparent as I sat in the classroom from the back or the side away from discussions and teachers' attention. I've always been a good student with grades in the As and Bs. But as I got closer to the end of the grading period, I noticed my grades were falling to Cs and High Ds. I was frustrated, to say the least, but it was this frustration that led me to realization. What about the people that go through this every day? How did they get involved in class? That is why I undertook advocating for the handicap for my senior project. Not just for me, but for all the permanently handicapped students and teachers who deal with these conditions. The most troubling aspects I ever recorded are as follows. Uneven pavement all around school that trips up even the healthy uncomfortable seat which forces students to not have legroom and be seated away from class discussion. Overcrowded, overcrowded classrooms that make it almost impossible to get around it. Shorter passing periods where one has to raise dangers to the class if you're not already in it. And then unmonitored handicap parking spots where unknowing parents and late students will park, forcing the handicap to have to find a new spot, usually much farther away. And finally, the biggest problem, fast closing doors which cannot be passed through in one trip, causing one to have to stop halfway, reopen the door, and then continue through. Now, these points do not in any way want, want to come forward as bashing Casa and its facilities. I simply just want to make you board members aware of these points and see the issues a handicapped student has to face on a daily basis. I've already discussed these points with my principal, Ms. Shaly, and she has given me some ideas as to what could be done to better accommodate handicapped students, such as handicap, handicap accessible desks that could be placed within the other students and tightening the screws on the doors so they can close slower. She also suggested I stand before you today and let my points be heard so they can be brought to your attention and discussed. Although some of these options, along with others, may be costly, such as repaving of Casas struggling spots, they are not only important when necessary in order to better accommodate students, teachers, and visitors who have disabilities. In the eight weeks I was on crutches, I saw at least five other students who are also on crutches or wheelchairs or even walkers and were having the same issues I had. In conclusion, Casa Grande needs to be updated for people with disabilities as soon as possible. It should not, for any particular reason, be a hassle to go to school every morning. I know some things cannot be changed, such as the spacious layout of the school, but it is a necessity to change everything and anything that can be altered. That is why I'm advocating for not only myself, but all members of Casa who have disabilities. I would never have realized these conditions unless I had gotten injured, which I guess makes a curse somewhat of a blessing. Now that my eyes have been opened, I would greatly appreciate seeing anything be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to item J, agenda, excuse me, item I, reporting activities that corresponds to school board members. And chime in if there's something we need to expand to here that the tomorrow's leaders today. Right, T L T? Government debt, grant guest readers and site visit. The FFA administrators, administrators debt. NCS varsity basketball games or varsity softball games. Mr. Baddeley announcing the girls varsity basketball games at Palma High School. Palma High School Casa Grande Athletic Booster fundraiser, the site visit to McKinley School. Baseball games. I was very kindly invited to the administrator of the week's celebration at an undisclosed location that was very well behaved and I thought very well attended. Tour of the Boys and Girls Club at McDowell. We'll get back to that one. Tennis match and a site visit for San Antonio High School. So, Boys and Girls Club at McDowell?
Yes, I was there yesterday afternoon and, um, with David Sullivan, president of the Boys and Girls Club, plus the administrators there, the people who run the program at McDowell site. And it was, I just wanted to share that it was, it was nice to hear how they're working with the teachers' principal at McDowell in, in making the after-school club, you know, work hand-in-hand with the academics of the, of the school day. But also, um, they had, they've started a, a program that reminded me of our Safe School Ambassadors Program that we heard about last month, where they're working with the kids on how to talk with their peers when they see their peer doing something wrong and how it affects the club. So I just thought, oh, it's starting young. And I just wanted to share that that would be nice to see that's implemented earlier in our year, so.
Very good. Any other comments on any feelings that we just discussed? If not, I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The consent agenda passes five. All right, let's move on to our whole items here. We're gonna start with business services, item four, purchase orders. So I will take a motion.
Second.
I need to ask if anybody has any reason that they need to recuse themselves from this particular item? Do I have any purchase order conflicts of interest?
No.
I think I do, true.
Okay. Those watching now, if we have a business interest in a particular item on the agenda, then that member is asked to recuse himself.
Might have been a client related.
Okay. Uh, let's see, so, let's see, we've got the, where am I? I have to read this correctly, hang on one second here. So I've got a motion to accept the purchase order report.
Yes.
And I'm the second, and I gotta recuse, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And one, I have a four oh one day. So same deal on the list of expenditures? I'll take a motion.
So move.
I'll take the second.
Second.
Do you notice I've got a kind of a thing going here where I go from left to right? All right, and I'll ask the same question. Does anybody here have a reason that they need to pull themselves out of the game on this one?
My turn.
Same reason. Okay, so my hand for you, okay? So you were my second, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, very good, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So it's gonna be a three oh two, for sure. Okay, revised deferred maintenance program for, is it two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen? Am I reading that right?
No, it should be, um, thirteen fourteen, right? Thirteen fourteen there.
So. Second.
So talking about?
Um, it's just, uh, in December, uh, we do our deferred maintenance walkthroughs to evaluate the school campuses to see what work needs to be prioritized and, and update this list. It's a five-year list of, of projects. It's not mandated any longer that we do this, but we still feel that it's important to take care of the taxpayers' investments and bring it to the board.
And for planning purposes of how you're in the schedule. I'd also like to note that in this document, there's some paving scheduled for Casa Grande, just in case anybody.
Got a little Tedrow girl left a little.
All right.
So I was, just everything that's listed on here, do we actually try to accomplish, or?
The things that are in the thirteen fourteen column. And the, and then the fourteen fifteen is, some of those are summer projects as well. So those are the items that we're looking at. The ones that are in future years, a lot of them are placeholders. It's really no longer required, but, um, when we had deferred maintenance funds from the state as opposed to the local control funding formula, which now assumes deferred maintenance funds within the local control funding formula, you had to have it on the list to be able to do it under the deferred maintenance funds. And so the future years are, are placeholders. And when we go back out next December, we'll make the determination if we move them into actually the year to be done or if we keep them as placeholders for future years.
How have we been doing so far, like if we look past years, I mean?
We, we do what we say we're going to, and we very, we rarely have to move something from a future programming to the current year. Occasionally, a great example is Valley Vista's H B A C in the multipurpose room. The board's going to be approving this evening a bid to, to replace that. Well, that was in a future project that we had before because it went out.
So, I mean.
Yes.
And does this list get affected by the bond measure if that's passed?
Um, for, for the deferred maintenance, there will still be general fund contribution towards deferred maintenance. What the bond funds will do is really the major maintenance projects, such as, you know, we repair roofs with these funds. Those would be when we need to replace roofs and when it comes from modernization. We need to go in and replace lighting, you know, retrofit lighting projects. Those are modernizations that will be done under bond funds with the approval of the voters whereby, you know, just going in, um, on an annual basis, for instance, we'll go in and replace lightings in the gym because to replace the lighting in the gym, you have to have a cherry picker to pick, put them up. So you only do that once a year, so you go in and replace them all. And then, you know, we do that in all gyms in the district. That'll be a deferred maintenance project.
Good. Any other questions on that? Have there public comments in any items? If you'd like to submit a public comment card on this particular item.
Great.
Why don't you give it to Steve? One, two questions. I don't see how this has anything to do with this particular item.
It does, the educational code actually has everything to do with all the upgrades that your planners made.
You can speak to the deferred maintenance plan, but I do not believe the deferred maintenance plan talks about wireless access.
I'm not talking about wireless access, I'm talking about carcinogens, yeah.
Okay.
The educational code.
I'm gonna keep you on a nice short leash, as long as you stay on topic, you're welcome to take your five minutes.
I give my five minutes, I will stay on topic, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
On the deferred maintenance program.
I'm gonna talk to you about what I learned about the educational code today. I spent the day in Sacramento, I talked to our legislators.
No, 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 we're talking about the deferred maintenance program. That's what this is about.
And the deferred maintenance is, so may I? May I, please?
No, you may not.
Why not?
Don't do that to me again, I'm tired of this and we're not gonna play this game.
No, it is, truth.
My meaning.
Truth.
We're talking about deferred maintenance.
That's correct, so am I.
So talk about deferred maintenance.
I'm talking about maintenance, is that part of it?
We're talking about the deferred maintenance plan.
So what do you, what do you consider the deferred maintenance plan is different than real maintenance?
We're approving the deferred maintenance plan.
In order to make improvements to the school.
Maintenance plan.
In order to make improvements to the school, correct?
You may speak, I'm not gonna say it again, I'll just have you sit down. You may speak to the deferred maintenance plan.
My understanding of deferred maintenance, sir, is that it actually then will eventually lead to repairs in your school.
Don't draw that, have you read the deferred maintenance plan? Do you have a copy of it? Do you wanna speak to it?
I want to speak to improvements made to the school, which the deferred maintenance plan will do.
Specific improvements made to, to the school you may speak of.
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I was spent the day in Sacramento talking to legislators.
Before you start, can you make sure that we stick to, I don't know, the deferred maintenance plan? Do you have any? So let me try to speak to that.
Okay, so between all the items left, we will get the thoughts in and they will all be on target.
Thank you.
That's good. So after spending the day with our legislators and talking to the California Department of Education, I learned a lot about the education code today. And I can learn a lot, it has very far-reaching implications in any time you choose to improve your schools. When you do, you have to take a look at what the current conditions are in your schools and you then have to evaluate, are we in any way introducing substances that would be considered dangerous, toxic, or carcinogenic into our schools? That is as relevant to the deferred maintenance plan as it is to something we're going to do tomorrow. It is relevant every single day. I learned today that there is a study that was done ten years ago on California schools, Pedalable being among them, where they identified such conditions and they were never addressed. And they absolutely by law need to be addressed any time you choose to make an improvement to the school. You are currently spending, I know of, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make some improvements to school.
The deferred maintenance plan, so move on.
And you're gonna be spending other money in this deferred maintenance plan to make improvements to the school. And so the onus is on the board to make sure that all of the other things that have been deferred actually get taken care of. And that means they need to be evaluated for their toxicity and their carcinogenicity. And you actually have to take steps to correct them. You have violations today, right now, in every single school and in every single classroom. You have them in the E L F range, you have it in the R F range. They are toxic substances and they are carcinogenic. You cannot make improvements to the school without addressing these. That is in the law and that is, will be forced upon you to address from this day forward. So I'm happy to state now for the deferred maintenance plan, that part of my statement.
Well, which is what we're talking about, so you'll need to speak to the deferred.
I think I just have.
Okay, are we done?
Okay, and I will make some other public comments later for some more specifics around this topic in general. Thank you.
Very good. So we've had, uh, do I have any questions regarding anything on discussion, the public comment, or any other items that?
I would like to note that asbestos is being removed.
Asbestos is being removed, that's good, okay.
Yeah, I mean, all this is roofing and flooring and lighting and, you know, HVACs and this is not technology or.
Unfortunately, Leanne's still on here, but to what extent are we gonna be replacing, looking to replacing some of the torn up Casa Grande parking lot? I mean, I know it's an Adobe issue, we have that problem.
So there is, I mean, the plan for this, this year with the deferred maintenance funds is to address paving. You know, our roofs are in good shape. I think there's, well, one roof that's being addressed is the Valley Vista because it's part of the project you're putting on the H B A C because H B A C is gonna go on top of the roof. And then primarily we can address paving, including a significant portion of paving at Casa Grande.
And over, over the years, we've also tried to remove the trees. A lot of tree roots affect that, and so we've been monitoring that and removing the trees as necessary.
It's just very difficult about Adobe. Further discussion on that? Nope, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, moving on to item seven, business services agreement authorization. Resolutions to enter into an agreement with, Steve, I can never do this.
Katroki kwak.
Thank you, architects, in the amount of thirty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for the secondary bond fund. Architectural services related to the design and installation of new modular building at Casa Grande High School.
Second.
On one side, ladies and gentlemen. All right. I got a motion in a second. Any discussions? Steve, why don't you just tell us a little bit about it, or Midge, however.
Yeah, I'll, I'll address this one. So we have.
Can we put you guys together?
In need for two S E D, for the new special education programs we're bringing on the campus. We have a portable that was the school program that we took over two years ago. So this is the second, third year of operations. And then we're bringing back additional special education classrooms next year. So the plan is to replace the leased portable with and provide another portable for special education classes that we're now bringing to the Casa Grande campus. And so this $37,300 is to design a two portable or two modular facility that will go adjacent to the existing R O.
How does this relate to the potential for bond funding? I mean, was this?
This, because we're bringing back the programs, this will be done in advance of bond funds using our developments.
I have a question about the sprinklers. In the agreement, it said that there are sprinklers on the nearby similar looking ones that were there applied to when it was required, and that the design does not include sprinklers. Are we going to have sprinklers?
So in these two facilities, because of the size and where they're going to be, we're not proposing to add sprinklers in regards to fire suppression. The cost of that is, is extensive, and the proposal would be that we will have smoke detectors, so we'll get immediate call out to the fire department if there's a fire, but not sprinkled in the facilities.
And then it's not required?
And it's, it's not required. You have to have one or the other, but you can have it monitored as opposed to sprinkler.
Steve, what's the overall cost of the modulars?
The modulars for the two classrooms will probably, based on what we've been experiencing, and again, these will be on concrete foundations and the like. So they will be probably around a quarter of a million dollars for the two, two classrooms. And these will be special classrooms in that they won't be just open space, but they'll have office space as well for special education purposes.
Good. Any other questions? Public comment?
Sure.
And we've used this group before, but Steve, I mean.
Yeah, this is, these are.
Didn't they do the portable, was it McKinley, or they did the removal and replacement?
Correct, last, last year.
And what are we doing, Troy?
Always on public comment. So my question is all about toxins and carcinogens again. And my question is, within this modular construction that you're planning, are you planning to put a wireless network to actually serve this modular construction?
So the, the scope of this approval, this approval is only for the construction work to be done, the prep work, right? Steve, would it be done for the monitor?
This is for the architectural services. And that's in the plans, is it not? In regards to the. The wired wireless networking for the devices in the plans, correct? That would be part of the architectural plans, would it not? It potentially can be. That's right, so that's why I'm addressing it. Is that okay?
Not that I understand that, sure.
Perfect, great. So the problem is, when you actually do new construction, you can't introduce new sources of toxicity or carcinogenicity into that construction. When wireless networking is a known carcinogen, a class two B carcinogen, it is a hazardous toxic substance. You do not have the right to put that into the plans for new construction. You actually have to address it not just with your new construction, but with all of your facilities. This is the problem. You are not actually following California educational code. It's very, very clear about what your responsibilities are. Unless you have done significant safety testing to demonstrate and prove the safety of the substances and the carcinogenic and toxic things you're choosing voluntarily to put into these rooms, you have no right to do that and can be legally prevented from doing so. These are all valuable learnings today. So there's a lot of good leverage that the public has to demand that the school environments in the Petaluma City School District actually be safe for students. Not guesswork, not somebody's opinion, not somebody's, I don't believe it or don't believe it opinion. It only has to do with what are the measurements, what do they mean, and what do we know about its safety? And for all of those things, the law is very clear. And for all of those things, running wireless networks in new construction or in existing construction is actually against California code. And all of this will be demonstrated to you very painstakingly over the course of the next several months at a great cost to the Petaluma City School District, completely unnecessarily, because I invited each of you to meet with me independently to talk about actions that we could do to avoid any of these costly and ridiculous legal proceedings that we will now all be enjoining on because of the lack of responsibility, the lack of response. I heard nothing back from you people. I've had two emails from you, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I've gotten several emails from Sherry over the time. Never an email, never an email, never an email, one returned phone call. I put my card on your tables in April. Can I meet with you individually? Never a response until December, one meeting. You have not taken your responsibilities seriously. As such, you will now face the consequences of your decisions and your actions. And it's unfortunately going to cost us money. The legal costs will be borne by the winning party. I believe at this point, there's not much that you're going to be able to say you can bank on keeping. So my suggestion, very, very, very strongly, is while this becomes a more national issue starting tomorrow on NPR, that I think that you might not want to be the poster children for this toxicity and carcinogenicity that you're introducing illegally into our schools. This is a big problem. It creates hazardous conditions, conditions you have been made well aware of since September 10th, and you have chosen to do nothing. That makes your liabilities very large. And as a result, you're gonna have to live with the consequences of your total ignoring of this issue. And it affects every improvement, whether you're doing wireless installations, whether you're doing foundational work, whether you're going to be replacing things. You have to address the E L F and the R F conditions in your schools. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Thank you.
All right, so that was the. That was number seven. What was that? So that's two, there's a five oh, let's move on to resolution, what's that, actually resolution, it's bid number zero one one four by Vista School, H B A C replacement to Pullman Construction Incorporated, the amount is $77,200, the deferred maintenance funds. The superintendent or designated authorized to approve change orders up to 10 percent. And work, except the work is being completed. I'll take a motion.
Second.
This is to replace the radiant heat system that has failed, and so the, the HVAC has to be installed on top of the roof, and so this is a replacement. And this is the system that Steve alluded to earlier about having to move up a re, a major repair at a school site.
So what part of Valley Vista still has radio heat?
It was the multipurpose room.
Really?
Yeah.
Because most of our older schools that were built in the 50s and 60s, radiant heat and multipurpose room floors.
It was cold, we used to lay down on the floor. Any other discussion?
Have we worked with Pullman before?
No, the low bidder, we haven't, but the reference checks are good and they're qualified yet.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? All right, that was item, right?
Yes.
All right, item number nine, resolution thirteen fourteen dash twenty of the Board of Education, the Petaluma City Elementary School District of County, Sonoma, State of California to establish general charter fund zero four be adopted.
Second.
What's charter fund zero four for everybody at home?
It's just going to allow the business office to isolate these individual charter funds. And this is true of, let me see, you're on nine and 10.
I should have combined them, I guess.
Yes, it's, so it'll just make tracking the individual charters easier than combining them into funds and doing multi-year projections for them. The current, the new financial system does not allow us to extract out certain things, and so this would make life a little bit easier.
So it's just accounting?
It's just purely accounting. As far as the state and the county goes, other than for our purposes, it rolls up into the general fund.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Five oh, item number nine, item number 10, resolution, so this should sound familiar, thirteen fourteen twenty one, or excuse me.
You're right.
Thirteen fourteen twenty one.
Thirteen fourteen twenty one of the Board of Education, Petaluma Joint Union High School District and the counties, Sonoma, State of California to establish general charter fund five.
So. Second.
Again, same as, same as number nine, item number nine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? I pass this five oh as well, too. So let's move on to item number 11, which is resolution thirteen fourteen twenty two of the Board of Education, Petaluma Joint Union High School District of the County, Sonoma, State of California, authorizing the Transportation Department to make an application for and to sign certain assurances with respect to applications for local, state, or federal programs, projects, or grants be adopted.
Second.
Great. So this is a grant opportunity by Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and this would allow us to replace one of our aging buses for free.
Really?
For free, yes.
Free's good.
Free's good, yes.
Everybody good with free? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? Five oh on item number 11. Moving to the final item, item number 12, certification, second interim report. Resolution, the board approved a positive certification that the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts will be able to meet our financial obligations year-end.
So move. Second.
So tell us about it.
I wanna hear, I wanna hear her say.
Okay, so as presented, we showed that we will be a positive going concern for this year and two subsequent years, and would like the board to approve a positive certification.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Oh, I'm sorry, I just.
Aye, it was a late aye.
Hey, we've got things rolling here, come on. All right, educational services, we have a discussion item with the first reading Petaluma Joint Union High School District, junior high school new courses. Does anybody have any discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay.
It looks a little incomplete. It seems that there's a little bit of boilerplate information in there that needs to be fleshed out before the next meeting for the second reading.
And we will definitely make sure that happens. One of the reasons I'm realizing, one of the reasons that it might be a little un-incomplete looking incomplete is that this is for a junior high, and we don't usually submit these, but we wanted you to see them because this is the beginning of the new course sequence for mathematics. So, but I'll make sure that we get all the information that we can completed, and then maybe pull the pages that shouldn't be there.
Right, but I did wanna make a comment that this could be confusing, this new math, the international math system for parents. And I don't know what's going on as far as communicating with them what, what it means, 'cause some of them are, you know, dead set on having their kids in algebra.
Right, so we are going to do an entire information campaign. We won't begin the implementation until the 15, 16 school year, so we have about 18 months to get ahead of that.
Good, 'cause I, I know that there's gonna be a lot of feedback.
Yes.
On this. But I think it's a good decision.
And then will it tie in with the high school curriculums?
Absolutely, there's a continuum, we're developing a continuum. Emily out there, Emily Donegan, who is trying to hide behind her purse.
It's all making up today.
Has, has been working with the committee, actually is the lead for the committee, who has been working through this whole process. We've got a meeting on March 26th and another one on April 3rd to kind of start really tamping down all of the gory details here and getting everything worked out. And then a, a big professional development day for the math teachers on April 21st.
Hey. Very exciting. I think the titles will also be confusing because, you know, if a seventh grader theory wants to take Algebra I, it would be called Math Eight.
So next year, or seven, oh, I don't know, my mother's.
Yes.
A seventh grader next year would be still able to take Algebra I, the traditional Algebra I that we currently have in our system. But starting in 15, 16, we would be looking at a new course sequence. And Algebra I, the Algebra I that we will be teaching starting in 15, 16, integrated one, is not our current Algebra I. It has geometry in it, it's got some Algebra II concepts in it, it's got some statistics in it. It is very different than our current Algebra I class.
So what we're doing is we're taking the Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, statistics, and a little bit of trig, and we're laying them out so that the concepts support each other. Instead of taking Algebra I and then moving over to geometry and forgetting everything you learned in Algebra I, and then going to Algebra II and taking a couple of months to get caught back up in algebra, we're taking all of the concepts, this is what they do around the world, and interweave them so that they support the concepts that we're trying to develop in mathematical thinking for the students.
The big advantage of this is kids will know how better to apply the math, because when you don't just apply a discrete algebra or geometry, typically they're interwoven into a problem to come out with a solution. And so with integrated math, that's the advantage of, of this approach.
I had a good example yesterday, even though it was in the elementary school, it was in a sixth grade over at McKinley, and the kids had all adopted a skyscraper. And they had, you know, measured the skyscraper, learned all about the skyscraper, and they were making scale models using all different kinds of math concepts. They had actually made the scale drawing and were making the models and actually building these buildings. It was very impressive, and they were very engaged.
It's wonderful. So they're actually not gonna be just taking Algebra I, they're gonna be taking Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, and statistics, starting in grade seven going forward.
So how do you, so as a seventh grader, there'll be basically two math options, there'll be a regular seventh grade math, and then there'll be an advanced seventh grade math?
Yeah, so starting in 15, 16, we'll have Math Seven and Math Seven Advanced.
And then Math Eight, Math Eight, well, we're still, we've got some controversy going on, so we're still talking about Math One and the first math, where Math One is going to be placed. Will there be one placed in eighth grade and one placed in ninth grade, probably?
It's gonna take a lot on parent education.
Yes.
Because, you know, we're so inclined, and my kid needs to be in that, you know, so just be prepared. As a district, we need to really start the education process.
We will start the education process ASAP.
Because parents worry about that. What if my kid doesn't get geometry? Does that mean it affects college? You know, you have to tie it in with the high.
That's one of the things that the, the U C system is, is supporting this.
Yes.
Decision, so that's something to tell parents to.
What about private universities?
All of them. I actually am getting to go to a meeting in April, middle, middle of April, where the U Cs are going to be there talking about their revised A through G requirements. It will be the first time we hear this. And the reason they're doing that is to line up with all of this new common core. And the reason they're doing that is to line up with all of this new Common Core and integrated and all of that kind of thing. So, and pretty, and it's pretty, I'm pretty interested in hearing what they're going to have to say. It's different, what they have said already is that usually the stuff has pushed down from the UCs and this time they're actually listening. And so it's going to be more of a meeting in a, meeting in the middle and a compromise rather than just them telling us, you'll do this, this, and this. So it will be an interesting, it's going to be an interesting meeting.
I'd like to hear the results.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
All right. So, let's talk real quickly about future business, what we have for next.
Anything for presentations?
Now we only have one meeting, correct?
Yeah, the, the next meeting is April 8th and we'll be bringing back the first draft of the LCAP report intervention.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to do a public report of action taken in a closed session and then after that, we've got actual action that we have to do out here. So for those here and watching at home, I think we're making some kind of a rash decision. These are student disciplinary items that were presented in closed session with specifics, evidence and such, and however those are voted on out here. So, I'm going to report out and we'll vote on each one of these specific cases. Case number 21. Case has been presented and of course they're made anonymous, so nobody knows names and children that we're talking about. Case has been presented to the board that student did commit an expel act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend site discipline teams recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in district operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status within effect for the spring semester of the 2013, 2014 school year and for the fall semester of the 2014, 2015 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? So that is five oh, sue case 35. Case 35, the case has been presented to the board that student did commit an expel act as defined by the California Education Code. Prior disciplinary actions have been attempted or not successful and/or due to the nature of the act, present to the pupil, causes a continuing danger to the physical safety of the pupil and others. Recommended motion is for the board to support the site discipline teams recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to facilitate enrollment in a county operated community day school. Student's expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2013, 2014 school year and the fall semester of the 2014, 2015 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, anger management, or life skills counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? It's also five oh. Case 36. Case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expel act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline teams recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in district operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2013, 2014 school year and the fall semester of the 2014, 2015 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? It's also five oh. All right, now let's move over to items that we need to vote on out here. These are also closed session items, they're related to personnel issues.
No, actually, we voted in there.
You voted in there, so you're going to report out about...
I thought we voted out here.
No, we voted the kids out here.
Oh, that's right, excuse me, I'm sorry, you're correct. Uh, do I have the...
Yeah.
Oh, I wrote, excuse me, I'm sorry. So this is item three. So this is resolution 1314-17 of the Board of Education, the Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District of the County, Sonoma State of California to non-reelect a probationary certificated employee effective June 13th, 2014 be adopted.
And you're just reporting out, and the vote was?
And the vote was five zero. And pursuant to, let's see, excuse me, resolution 1314-18 of the Board of Education, Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District of the County, Sonoma State of California, to release temporary certificated employees who served more than 75% of the school year effective June 6th, 2014 be adopted, and that also was a five zero vote. Okay?
Well, five, just to report out on five, there is no action taken.
Uh, let's see. Uh, we're going to sign some papers, other than that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjournment, so you got something?